Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Mr. Farmer.
Hello. Last time I was here was regarding adding the dock garage door for the Manny's Building. The last door we had was just a simple garage door, so we added a panel door essentially, with two windows right there. And it will be a shade of blue too, so it won't be plain white.
Everybody okay with that?
I don't think so.
No?
No. The two panels and windows?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just like the garage door, that's all.
The reason why is because this is the loading dock and behind it is all the inventory equipment. We don't want to put too many windows in there.
You still could put a make decorative doors without windows. My seat goes, because I was looking at those for the fire station. Bring that thing over here. I can't do this.
It doesn't need to have the windows if you can make it decorative.
Okay.
Okay. If you want a solid, I don't know, you want to be like, it doesn't have to have windows. You can make whatever, you know, I don't know anything, I don't know much about odd doors. I've got plain old doors on my house. But they make some kind of a colonial door without windows that John's talking about. Without windows, that's perfectly fine.
Who's that door guy in East Hampton?
Rayner Door.
Rayner. He had a whole bunch of different designs of them.
You know, you've got Rayner Door, you've got, I don't know if you're talking to Jerry Divine on this?
I'm not sure who their architects talk to yet. I could go speak to him and say, you want something that's more of a colonial design.
Right. I know I looked for some for the fire station, North Hadley. And they got a whole different, kind of different ranges of colonial look indoors.
Where was this?
That was from Rayner, I seen. And then I got some, I don't know, I think I got some information from that.
Okay.
And different doors.
They all, anybody puts indoors, you know, the guy from Hadley, the guy from East Hampton, they'll give you a selection of something really colonial. They'll probably come back with two or three things and you don't have to have the architect draw it.
Maybe even instead of getting him drawn on your drawing, bring us the cut sheets of the company.
Right.
And you would say, you know, I would like to use one of these three or four. And that, you don't need to get a draw on it to build it. We know what the building looks like. We know what it's going to look like. But that way it saves you going back to the architect and paying him to redraw and redraw and redraw. Just some legwork on you. Come back to the cut sheets. You know, these, I don't know, half a dozen different styles. I would like these three, what do you think? And then you can go from there without going through all this every time.
Okay.
When do you want to start building? Last week?
Last week?
Yeah.
This is not holding it up. You know, this is something that...
No, you're gonna keep that opening as a door.
You started to build, right?
Um, yes. So we started there, but this isn't, this isn't gonna...
The opening's not gonna change.
Make sure you get the proper set back.
Was that an eight, ten by ten door?
Uh, I believe so. I'll double check that.
So, you know, that's not an odd sized door for something. So they shouldn't be able to accommodate that. If it was fifteen by sixteen, it's not gonna be a whole different story, but they should have a recent, reasonable selection of those things.
Okay.
I'm gonna see when I got my file here. I think I got whole file of those. I got a whole bunch of stuff for that fire station.
All right, I'll just take a look and shop around.
All right, okay. Yep, thank you. Carol Smith?
Yep. I went over today to see Dan over in the assessor's office. And about our property line and things like that. And, um...
What property are we talking about?
Thirty-three Lawrence Plain Road.
Okay.
He has these plans that show that, well, this one doesn't show this here. Or this one here. Let me see. I got it upside down, so let me find it. Okay. We're here. All right, so now this doesn't show this where Teddy Michikowski has got his trailers.
Okay.
Okay. And so he says that it was a change done by him and Kenny Keeler. And I don't know where they got that. They said this was done in 2000. And I have this printout from the registry of deeds. That doesn't show that at all. It's still...
We haven't registered it.
It's still here. And this is done in 2010. So we're having a problem because Teddy Michikowski is wanting to move our pole, our electric pole. And, um, because he says it's on his right away. And it doesn't, or the right away, the road is already in there. Nothing needs to be changed. And he's got DigSafe sprayed all over the road, on the main road. And, um, right away on our grass, he's sprayed on our grass for right away.
So the assessors are asking us to resolve that concern?
Right. I'm asking.
Okay. And... When was that signed, Jim?
This one is 2010, January 29th.
Right. And if you see on this other one too, that this, um, goes straight across, one of them goes straight across and the other one doesn't.
Okay, so there's only so much we can do. We can't change property lines.
Okay.
But what you have here is, um, this same surveyor did both plans. So I think your first stop has to be with the surveyor to ask him what's, why he did them differently.
Okay.
Randy Iser?
Randy Iser. We've been to Randy Iser and... Okay.
So technically, technically, this survey is a survey of this land here.
Right.
And it only picks up this land as, as an anchor, a reference.
A reference.
This, this document is not a survey of this property. So that's probably why this, on the other hand, is a survey of this property. So that's why the details would be different, because the details on this, the details from here, don't matter to this plan.
Okay.
Why the assessors did not pick up the plan change, I don't know. This, so this shows a parcel A.
Can you tell me if this is registered?
This is recorded. It is.
Oh, right, right there. Twenty-eighty-seven, eighteen.
However, just putting a plan on record, does, it looks like this was supposed to be a transfer.
And Kenny Keeler says he's never transferred anything.
Parcel A to be combined with land of Keeler is shown here into Form One, Undivided Parcel. So what this plan says is that parcel A and parcel B were going to be combined. And that always would happen if someone had altered the deed of it. Just recording this doesn't solve the problem.
Okay.
So the next...
So it has to be a deed?
There would have to be, in order to combine parcel A and parcel B, there has to be a deed of one or the other. Who owned parcel A? Do you know why they were doing this?
Well, when this property was, well, when they, Teddy sold this property to the Spice Company, he kept this for some reason. He's got ten feet along this edge and this section. And he has a trailer on this section.
And the plan at the time was that parcel A and parcel B were going to be combined. Now, it doesn't say who was going to, well, Keeler owns parcel B.
Right.
So this said, this says the plan, the idea was that he cut off parcel A, he was going to transfer parcel A to Keeler.
Okay, but he still has his trailer there.
Uh, but this will not be the first time that something is shown on a plan and doesn't happen.
Okay.
So this is only part of the picture. What you need to do is basically find out if there was ever a deed of parcel A, which would involve looking at the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And you're telling, Dan's telling you that that is, didn't happen? Let me see, where's the assessor's plan? Okay. So the assessor's plan is showing it that it never happened. That doesn't mean it didn't, doesn't mean it happened, doesn't mean it never happened.
It's all one piece.
It's all one piece on the assessor's plan.
It's all one piece on the assessor's plan.
Oh, okay. So that suggests that it happened.
Right. One point six six five.
Now, that's five point five and then that's fourteen thousand.
Five eight three oh, five eight three, five eight three oh. So this size and this size are the same.
And the, that's five, uh, five point five acres plus another quarter acre.
Yeah, that's not added on to this one. I don't know, seventy-two, four sixty-one, that's...
The Spice Company, that's about just shy of two acres.
Southern New England Spice.
Okay, so that's one point, that's one and three, one and two thirds acres here.
Yeah.
That's about one and two thirds. Okay.
So either the...
For some reason, this piece doesn't show up on your parcel.
But it may actually, these, it says right on it not to be used for conveyancing, which means real estate transfers. These are not as accurate as these. So the fact that that doesn't show up might mean that it has been combined, but...
They just didn't correct that number.
Just didn't correct that number. But, um, what, you just want to know who owns that. I guess we can't tell you because we don't have the records of the registry of deeds.
And according to this here, this line goes this way instead of there.
Well, that's, this line is this line. This line is this over here.
Okay.
This is the, so this is the outline of this right here. Hold on, I'm gonna, Teddy's back. Teddy, your rear line, Teddy. So either...
So, but this should go this line?
This is this line right here.
Yes, but how's it connecting here? You're saying this, that's going a different direction?
Well, we can't answer that.
Yeah. These are survey questions and registry of deeds questions. That, we don't, we don't keep these kind of records, so unfortunately, we, we're not trying to pass the buck. But it's just, we just can't help you with these things when you have questions on lot lines.
So the question is either that transfer happened or it didn't happen. So either Ted sold this one to Spice Company? Okay, so either he still owns that or he's did it to Keeler. And the only way to be sure is to look at the registry of deeds. Because if it's not there, it didn't happen. But as to the other question you have about why the plans are slightly different, fortunately, the same surveyor did both of them, so you really have to talk to him about what's what. And why, why he did different plans.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Dee Scanlon?
Hi.
Thank you.
Would you please apply for accessory apartments?
Okay.
On existing property. I don't know what we need here, but these are the plans. We have an existing twenty-four by twenty-four garage.
Who is this?
For E Street.
Okay. No, not the, not the, do you have a plot plan?
I do.
We need the plot plan. We need seven copies, we need four copies of the plot plan. Of the property, where the house located on it and where your property is going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Four copies of that?
Yes. Doesn't have to be big, but this can be, we prefer eight by, eight and a half by eleven, regular, regular sizes.
Okay.
Septic or sur?
Septic.
Septic, you've got to get a board of health.
Well, we had someone come out and look at it. He said our tank is big enough. We just need to expand our beach and peel.
Yeah, we need, we need some of the board of health about that.
Okay.
Okay. If you go to the Hadley website, the zoning bylaws are on there. There's a section on accessory apartments that tells you kind of like in a, almost like a court before it.
It's telling about the four copies of the plot plan that I'll get that.
Okay.
No, it'll tell you the limitations, nine hundred and twenty square feet maximum.
Eight hundred and ninety-six.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, well, than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. Eighteen seventeen. We'll continue with eighty-three Rocky Hill Road here.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Good to see you again. So, uh, want me to start?
Yes, sir. No, you start. Yep.
So the way we left a couple of weeks ago was with the Arbovites?
Yes.
And some full, and, you know, making sure it's not, you know, visible from the road. I spoke to David Moskin. I've got some notes. The first thing is, is the fence actually belongs to him.
Okay.
So that was miscommunication on everyone's part. It doesn't belong to neighbors. It's actually his fence. So it's an eight foot high fence. And when we go to pull the actual permits for the job, he'll make sure that if you want in writing, for as long as the solar system's there, he'll have that fence there blocking, you know, the view from that. As far as environmentally goes, he doesn't see the Arbovites as something that he's willing to do only because all of the foliage on his property is natural and he doesn't want to bring in unnatural evergreens or whatever they might be, just to block that one little one foot thing you can see with the fence from the road. So he, he's not really looking at that as an option. Two other points is there are fences on his side, I'm sorry, or are trees on his side of his fence that the solar array will be in front of, so they'll actually can create even more blockage from the road. And he is, so the fence is his. It's pretty much non-visible from the road. And he's good with the fifteen foot to the property line requirement, so.
That fence is how high?
Eight feet.
And how high is your solar array?
Um, it's a thirty-five degree tilt from the, from the beginning of the array. It's about, it's nine feet, nine and a half feet. So you're looking at about a foot and a half. And we have a...
And you'll see the backside of the panels, right? Not the front side?
No, yeah, you'll see the backside. I actually have a 3D visual that we drew up of, of his entire plot plan, if I might show some people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this is eighty-three, and it's gonna be hard for everyone to see. I don't wish there was anything. All right, so, let me go this way. Let me go out. So this is his property. There's the street. Here's his driveway. That's where the array is going to go. That's his fence. This is the property in front of him. The neighbor's already given permission to go ahead and put the system there. Conservation Committee's already approved having the system there as well. Now, if what we do, because this is all to scale, so if we look, if we go in and encroach upon this, this is the fence. This is all to scale with Aurora. So this is an eight foot high fence. The array is a foot and a half off the ground. Okay. And what you're gonna see is, well, it's kind of hard to... Let me go, let me just go to the road to the driveway angle here. So if we're here...
Where's Rocky Hill Road? Are you gonna see nothing?
Right here. This is Rocky Hill Road?
Yeah, way up that way.
All right, well, it's, it only gets, lets me take a certain chunk. But if you look at it from this perspective here, so if we go to the corner of his driveway.
Woods right here. If you're, if you're east of Rocky Hill Road, there's all woods that's just gonna hide it. The only place you're gonna see it is from the west.
Right. And if, so if you look from here, from this angle, right, this, this little...
That's looking from northwest?
Yeah, yeah, because if you come from over, from this side of the, going towards...
So you're looking in a direction of southeast?
This is going towards North Hampton, this way.
You're looking southeast. That's correct.
Right. So what you see right here, see this little strip right above the fence? That's all you're gonna see. You're gonna see about this much. If you're looking that way while driving thirty-five miles an hour, watching the road, if you decide to glance that way, that's all you would ever see, is this little strip right here. And these two trees are now in the mix because they're on his property. So if you're looking from...
You don't show nothing from the other side?
Well, from this side, like if you're going towards Amherst, right?
Between the tree line and...
Here's his fence.
Regal ourselves.
There's his, here's his little barn way back there, right? There's the barn. That little strip just above the fence is all you're gonna see.
Yeah, but what are you gonna see this way? That's what you're not showing.
Yep, I'm showing it. I can show it from this way, right over here. All I'm doing is spinning it. So now, we're looking from this vantage point going that way. There's his, there's the neighbor's house. There's the Moskin house. There's the Moskin barn. There's the Moskin fence. And all you're seeing is that. Plus, there's a lot more foliage on this side going that way than there is the other way. So, you know, there's very little of any, there's a whole lot more, you know, ground mounts that you can see visually from this, this will be, you wouldn't even be able to see the whole thing. You're just looking at this strip. So it's really not a visual impact whatsoever.
Yeah, you're sorry. That's your feeling. And what, what makes him, he's gonna keep that wood fence there? What happens when that fence rocks?
What he said is pursuant to, you know, procuring the building permit for the job, he'll make sure that he has in writing that he will always have a fence there.
Yeah, what's that?
Whatever, whatever rules you want to put in place will comply with that. It's just that he doesn't want to bring in any outside foliage or outside trees that is not indigenous to his property. But yeah, he will write in writing, if you want to make sure it's an eight foot fence.
Soil panels aren't indigenous to the property either.
No, no, they're not indigenous, but it's not a, not foliage, just not a plant, not a living...
No, you hit my drift.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I think they're much uglier looking than abreviated trees.
Uh, he just wants to put a ground mount there.
Certainly, all the neighbors have no objections and I think we're kind of splitting hairs.
I think it's gonna be most not very visible. I mean, I don't want to say never gonna be visible, but I want to see next to nothing.
Well, you see it something in black and white.
About maintaining the fence?
And recorded in the registry of deeds that that fence will be there in the life of that solar panels in a minimum of, they're eight, eight foot?
Yep.
Minimum of eight foot high.
Those are in the notes that he sent me that he's willing, yeah, absolutely totally will put that in writing.
Can we see that agreement from him before we grant this?
Well, can we just make it a contingent, if, if that's not part of the permit package, then you can't get a permit. Can we just do it that way instead of having to wait another two weeks? We're getting towards the end of the season. We'd like to get the project in.
Well, just let him get it done, ship it down here. And that's, yeah, right. That's okay.
Right, but I would, I'd like to be able to pull permits though and start the project. And if you make a contingent upon acquiring a permit, of course, it'll be in the paperwork and we'll forward it along to you for your review before the permit gets issued, but we'd like to try and, it's, it's October now, so we want to try and get it before the snow falls.
Well, if he puts it down, it's filed with the registry of deeds, so I don't have any problem with it.
And to make that a contingent, we have no problem with that.
Okay, so the administrative review, it's been referred for interdepartmental review. As far as I know, we had no comments. We take final action. We have the required documents. Let's see, where's the design? We have the elevations, um, site control. We have insurance. Adequate notification. Clearing of vegetation to the minimum extent necessary. Ground clearance, soil permeability is not an issue. Well, life corridors are not an issue. Setbacks. Approved. Fifteen foot setback.
What is the length of that fence, the woody fence?
The length of it?
Yeah.
I can get you a measurement.
That's a stockade fence, right? That's what they call that?
Yeah, just your typical stockade fence. I lost my wife, I guess. We have approximately, that fence is a hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy-five feet, somewhere in there.
A hundred and seventy feet. Roughly speaking.
Roughly, exactly. I have a geoposition mapping device. It's about one seventy, one seventy-five, somewhere.
Okay, so ordered to verify in writing that he will maintain an eight foot fence.
The existing eight, eight foot stockade fence.
Maintain or replace existing eight foot stockade fence.
Approximately a hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy-five feet in length.
Uh, for the life of the array.
Right.
And we're also waiving the setback to, from fifty feet to fifteen feet.
Correct.
With the butter's consent. With the butters consent.
Just a little bit?
Nothing, we don't worry about it. For administrative review, that's, it's not a special permit, so, okay, that's not part of the package. So with those two waivers, I'll move that the administrative review is satisfied.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call if they were say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's pass it, you know, it's late.
Right, I will have him get that letter. Now, when you say get it to the registry of deeds, educate me, I don't know what that means.
Doesn't it stamp with registry?
Well, what he's asking for is a notarized affidavit at the registry of deeds, linked to the property deed, saying that the caper's Demoskin leads, or where the next owner is below...
Has to maintain the fence for, as long as that's all...
For the life of the array.
Got it, understood completely. You guys need anything else from me?
No, good.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, you here for anything special or just to listen to Mr. Barry? Mr. Larry?
I'm here.
Mr. Larry, okay. Larry, you're up.
I'm up. Don't know what's more relative to the, your issue. I mean, we did, we give you a...
Before we get into, before we get onto a news topic, can you bring, I bet to send you an email, could you bring the master plan?
Ah, shit.
Next time? Or can you just drop it off at my office?
Oh, my God, yes.
Probably from my...
I actually had to step over them to hear.
Either, either, his office or my house, whichever is easier for you.
Do you think that's a, you think that's a joke?
Once I get the dust off of them, I'll bring them over.
You're saying you keep it on the floor?
They're in boxes.
Oh, okay.
They're in boxes.
Does your employer...
And I put them right at the entrance of my cubicle, so I'll remember them, and I just...
Does your employer know you're creating a tripping hazard?
Oh, man. So the issue, I mean, the last time it came, I suggested a quick fix, just to try to address their, their problem. And the thought was to, no, they'll go with a quick fix, let's see if we can incorporate the two together. I'm still working on that, I have gone out. The other issue was determining, you know, what the value's gonna be and what the quid pro quo is gonna be. And I've gone and talked to a number of communities that have similar bylaws and response. I typically get, oh, we don't have that either, back then. So I'm hoping is, is anybody gonna be going to that?
Eighteen, yes.
Good.
Everybody but Joe. So if we let you know, can you let the proper person, PBPC, know?
So we got four going?
Yes.
You know, I, I will go.
You will go?
Oh, yeah, look at him.
Peer pressure.
Right. There we go.
But the second half of that workshop, which I think everybody should stay for, and that's designed to have the people who currently have trusts operating, kind of brainstorming and spitballing back and forth in the war stories. And I think that's probably the, as important a part of that workshop as any of this is gonna be. And so that's where I kinda wanna talk to them, oh, what are you doing? How do you address this?
Yeah, 'cause Joe, Joey has some questions as well. And, you know, based on numbers that Tom gave out, Attorney Brady gave out last time, out, we stand at this percent, we have this many houses on, on the market, it'll take us, at our going rate, it'll take us somewhere around fifty years, give or take, just to drop to ten percent at our current rate. So if we get this money, you know, what do we do with it? What about this? I got a few ideas, I don't know if we can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we put it into a fund. Okay, granted, we're not gonna get one-for-one and all kinda good stuff, but we have this money in a fund, maybe over some time, can we use the money for both? Maybe making, getting a house and renovating it, other than the thing? Can we use it for maintenance of our existing facilities? You know, those are questions I have, 'cause if we can use it for maintenance and keeping up what we have, that's also very helpful, as opposed to pulling from anyplace else. We hear about, oh, we don't have money for this, we don't have money for this, because doors don't close, and, you know, on and on and on. Well, if you get a fund that's got a little bit of money in it, can, can it be used for maintenance? I don't know.
Could it be used to renovate the North Adley Hall?
No, no, no. Maintain existing affordable housing units. Nothing else, not, it definitely could not be used for anything in town, other than maintaining existing affordable units.
Don't tell us something that didn't drain the swamp.
Well, that's, well, if it's only for affordable, then it's not, they can drain it very quickly. So, you know, those are questions.
Yeah.
And I'm not, you know, can it be, can, could, is that a possibility?
Would it have to be owned by the town, not by individuals?
Absolutely, yeah. That would be like the golden horse section.
It depends what trustees have to operate within the law, and they can determine how it's spent.
Well, those, exactly right, exactly right. I just think this workshop is just so unbelievably timely.
Yeah, exactly. When I saw, when I saw it come through, I said, boy, is that, is that the perfect...
My feeling is, like...
Did you see this?
What I think that Joe, Joe wants to grab me, please.
I can tell you, in large part, that workshop is a result of your issues.
Right, it's what the builder built those houses and put that on the inventory, we're not the contractors.
Correct. That's, that seems like a simple solution, but it's, we're gonna be monitoring it. Guarantee is not simple.
It's very complicated, that, it's all complicated.
Well, how do we uncomplicate it?
I'm not...
That's what we're...
The state has designed it.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's one of those things that...
Other communities are doing this, aren't they?
No.
Nobody in the Commonwealth.
Uh, no, there are some that have trusts, and right now, it's not a large group. And there are a number of communities that have inclusionary zoning bylaws that don't offer the in lieu of payment option.
Does, does any of those communities have developers build those affordable houses on your project?
Um, there are not, uh, yeah.
That's what I wanna find out.
Well, these are great questions. Instead of asking Larry to give us the answer to these, these are questions that are like open-ended. These are things we wanna find out when we go to this workshop.
We've gotta explore the possibilities. You know, one of the possibilities is that, at the rate we're developing now, I mean, it could be fifty, sixty years before we hit that threshold of ten percent again. And there are towns around us, Hatfield, Sandalon, Granby, all touching in South Adley, that have three or four percent.
Yeah, they're way up, they're way down.
They're way down, and you know what? The wolf is not at their door to make the ten percent.
Right.
On the other hand, the good news about the trust fund is the fact that if we have that money set aside, and all of a sudden, we get a few large-scale developments and it begins to close in on us, we have the ability to build only affordable units, whereas if a developer comes in with a forty-B goes through the ZBA...
Right.
Only, what is it, twenty-five percent have to be affordable, another seventy-five percent, so you could have...
Right, but remember, if they're rental units, you get to count all hundred percent.
Right, we understand.
How many, how many affordable units in town may the occupant purchase?
We have two-hundred-and-eighty-five.
And how many are off?
None.
None, none, so that's...
I would say none.
That I would say, too, yeah.
Because...
And the rentals aren't the management issues, it's the ownership ones that are problematic.
And this is all something that, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
And fifty years on a row, we don't wanna design something today knowingly fifty years on a row is gonna create a problem.
Right.
If we can stay ahead of the curve and plan for that, that's what we're trying to do. We don't need to, we, we don't need to take action in the next couple of years, we simply need to plan to take action.
Right.
And have something, a fund or something where we can utilize that, that, like Joe says, something comes in, we can be ready to strike. Because if you got, you know, some number comes in and it puts us at the ten percent or whatever it is, it's not gonna take a whole lot of affordable units to bring us back up.
But we'll be sitting on this, this pot, this pot of gold, if we're not utilizing it, are we in jeopardy of, there's gotta be somebody's gonna say, look, you gotta put it to use, or...
Yeah, use it or lose it.
You don't lose it, it's dedicated.
If, yeah, and if it's, well, these are questions for the affordable, for this, for this workshop, exactly.
And another note, we, we will be going and getting certified by the state and do the training to be certified to do the monitoring.
Oh, you will?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that is.
And then we're gonna find out what the fee's going to be for you to do that.
It's...
There he goes laughing again.
It's, it's a lot of work, boy, and I sat down and pulled the reg's out, as I know you did, and looked at what we have, what we have to go through, and it's not, it's not easy, it's not simple.
Right, and that's great, and that's why we want to have this fund, we want the options. And we, let me say it for this way, we think we want the options.
That's true.
That's better, that's better.
We think we want the option of either or, and with a workshop, it'll at least give us some, it'll probably confuse us more than it'll tell us. But at least it'll give us the questions a bit more now.
But, but what you will have in the room are people who have the trusts and are operating under it and will have the worst, what worked and what hasn't worked.
Right.
So what if, what if you had somebody that was gonna buy one of these things, and they say, okay, you meet the qualifications income-wise, and he goes to the bank and he said, your credit's terrible, you can't get a loan?
Mm-hmm. That's an issue.
Could we use the trust to make a loan to him, a mortgage?
No.
That's a good question.
Add that to the list.
That's right.
I think, I think what you're gonna find, unfortunately, is many of these people that are low-income, don't own, they're not creditworthy.
Yeah, I think that's, that's true, very true. But yet, there are lots that are, so it's finding the right, the right one for the right fit.
So, to get past our immediate hurdle...
Yes.
I think we, we seem to agree that the inclusionary zoning bylaw does not work...
Right.
As anticipated, and the inclusionary paragraph in the senior housing doesn't work as anticipated. So, seems like the, one option, I won't call it the best option, I'll just call it one option, is to, and I don't know if we can suspend a zoning bylaw.
We need town meeting.
Well, no, I know we need town meeting approval, but I'm thinking that...
I mean, if you're looking for the quick, the quick fix to address their issue, I gave you what I thought was relatively quick way of doing it. That is not the final solution, you know, that's just a quick fix, this is a stopgap.
And I, I think, we can't make a decision tonight. Well, in, in two weeks, we're gonna have some information on this workshop, okay? And I'd be willing to bet, whatever we propose, because of reasons we've been going over for the last several months, getting it to the, to the spring town meeting and getting it approved will not be an issue, because we're, we're trying to do the right thing, but we're trying to do it cautiously. We're not trying to just jump in and jump links, and I'm guessing that if we come up with a fund, and we think it's got a good chance of passing, it'll put Mr. Roberts where he wants to be without any extreme hardship. It'll give us something to deal with, and, you know, okay, that, that's what we have. We may have, the, the actual trust may require a lot of fine tuning, but at least if we have the option in the fund, okay, now we can appropriately, for lack of a better word, design this fund to do what we hope it can do.
Yeah.
But if we come up with more questions, Bill is right, we have to resolve Barry Roberts' dilemma...
Yep.
And our dilemma as well.
Yes.
And I see the two options, one is just have him build the five units and not put them in the trust fund, or let's set up a trust fund.
Right.
Well, once, if we do set up the trust fund, how do we fund it? How do we know how much to fund it? And that's gonna be a give and take between Barry Roberts and the planning board, but those are our two options we've gotta address fairly soon.
And I, I think the issue with the trust fund is, you know, whether it works for you.
So how are we gonna know that?
Well, you should be, after this meeting, you find, and you get to talk to the towns, and everyone the towns that are doing it, you know, can they do it with just the trust fund? Or do they, does the trust fund have to run and hire somebody to do it?
I wanna know if there's any towns, if you can find out before that even happened, any towns that the developer builds the affordable units.
Yeah, I'm sure Amherst does them.
So let's see, if we do suspend...
And, and the developer pays the whole tab and that goes on our inventory?
No, it doesn't go under the inventory unless they're built.
I know, but I said, if the developer builds it, that goes on their inventory as soon as they're sold, correct?
You, and to get it on the inventory, there's a process the town has to go through. Because this is not a typical project, it's part of a state or federal subsidy program, it's like a local initiative, you have to file for it, you gotta put on the, you get the units put on the included here, some size housing.
So you're saying Amherst does this already?
I would bet, if you're thinking of a community around here, Amherst has probably done that.
So who would administer in that, in Amherst?
Again, it's probably rental, and rental is not really, is not a real big issue.
Yeah, right.
It's the ownership ones.
Exactly. This, this one here is ownership, not, not a rental.
So we know in Amherst that there are inclusionary rental units, because there's a developer who recently got all over the front page of the Gazette for not having the units available. But yeah, that's a, I guess that's a good question, if there is an answer to it, who has an inclusion, who has an inclusionary zoning program that involves the developer building units for sale?
Right, so Larry, what is the benefit to potential owner to own the property as opposed to renting it if you don't have any potential price appreciation dictated by the market? Why would someone wanna do that?
Which, rented?
Own, why would someone wanna own something if there's all these restrictions on basically...
Now, you're talking about the, the prospective affordable homeowner?
Correct, correct. Why would somebody wanna own it if, in fact, there are all these restrictions based on the economic benefit that he can get?
Because there are no other options?
No rentals?
Well, not if they wanna be a home, not if they wanna, not if they wanna own.
But why would they, why would they wanna own? Where's the equity?
It's still appreciating, it's not, it's not as appreciating as much as the market units are.
Only if the average income in Massachusetts goes up and not down, if it goes down, then, then you're gonna have to value the property at a lesser value.
It's not so much the income, it's the price of the housing.
But back to Bill's issue at hand, and we've gotta get...
Governed all by the state.
Barry, he's sitting on these units, or he's potentially sitting, waiting to build or not to build, and could we suspend that section of the bylaw? And let's say we do suspend that section of the bylaw until we can get something really that we kind of agree on.
Yeah.
So Barry's four units, if Barry builds these five units, isn't it five units, the percentage that will drop is two-tenths of one percent, so it's not like we're giving him a great favor, but at least we're getting him off the snide. I mean, we gotta do something, because we, we got him into this mess.
Why can't it be postponed until we do get straighten this mess out?
Postpone those, keep those five lots available?
Yeah.
Well, he's made an investment.
The problem is, it's gonna be interspersed, you can't put the five units at the end.
Yeah, well, let's...
And if you intersperse them and he builds around them, he's already run into that problem with a couple of his units, where he unintentionally will save one or two lots for some reason, there's a house on either side of it, and to put the foundation, he had to pump the concrete at considerable of your cost. And so you don't wanna have him reserve five foundations throughout the property and have to pump the, you're gonna make these houses extremely expensive by doing it. So you wanna go one after the other to get the stuff in. I understand that. He's getting close, I mean, I don't think he's gonna hit it right away, but we need to give him some kind of direction.
Exactly, right, yeah.
I personally think the trust fund is going to go through, and I think we're gonna relieve him of a lot of these issues by allowing him to put it to the trust fund, because I personally think that's gonna be a good thing, a good option.
I'll tell you something, I can't say that, for me, because I don't know if that is, what is the other? I wanna know the... I wanna know the whole story.
I'm, I'm not trying to push my opinion on anybody. I'm simply giving you my single opinion.
Trust, yeah. Till I know the, the complete story.
Well, you know, John, you're, you're right. But it may take several months, it may take a year for us to really resolve.
There's gonna be some towns in the Commonwealth. It can't be just Hadley that we're in this situation and nobody in the Commonwealth has addressed it.
It says since the Port Vale House Trust Fund passed in 2005, approximately seven communities have established trust funds.
Yep.
The trust funds, right.
And, you know, we're, we're trying to resolve, we're trying to get to a solution tonight. I don't know why, it's something we wanna do.
You need the trust fund.
We, we don't need a recommendation tonight.
Well, yeah, you're exactly right.
They're gonna do the...
This meeting is the day after our next meeting. So the first meeting in November, we should have, at least have an idea.
Yeah.
Of where we're going to go. The trust fund is either possible or not possible. And it's gonna take a lot of ironing out. I agreed to do the right design of it. But at least after this meeting, we should have a better idea amongst this group than we think it's feasible or not.
And if you wanna volunteer to be the trustees.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. But I'm smiling because Hadley zoning was a reaction to Amherst zoning. Amherst said, we love apartments. And Hadley said, if you love apartments, have them. We don't want any apartments. And Amherst said, no to business. The Azares Mall was supposed to go where, uh, University Drive is and Stop and Shop. But Amherst said, no. So Hadley said, we'll take it plus. They put the whole sewer line in on Route Nine, so development follows sewers. So now we're saying, let's do it like Amherst does. Some of these guys are rolling over in their grave.
Well, Amherst only adopted their inclusionary zoning bylaw a year or two ago.
I'm not saying that we should do it like Amherst did. Because I, Amherst doesn't have any own inclusionary zoning.
Right.
Well, let's, let's hear what Barry or...
Do you know about any, I mean, I know Amherst has rental apartments. They, anytime that a special permit is required for the underlying use, if you have more than nine units, then you trigger having a, an affordable component to it. So the Amherst Motel, for example, is proposing 131 units of rental. Twelve percent of those, or 16 units, need to be qualified in the subsidized housing inventory. That process is gonna go through the Amherst Housing Authority. They do the affirmative marketing plan. They qualify the units and then they recertify them annually. But again, that's rental. We've talked with, because it's his ownership, we've talked with Valley CDC, who is involved with different, you know, in different percentages based upon their scope of work for purchases. So that tells me that there are communities that do have these purchase programs. I know a lot of the time half housing or some governmentally funded entity will be the ones that actually put those houses there. And there, there are resale limits. There's a maximum resale limit. And quite frankly, if you can't find, um, somebody who is income-eligible, then after it's probably 120 days, um, that falls off the subsidized housing inventory rolls and can actually be sold at market rate. So it's not, just because you have that deed restriction doesn't mean it's in perpetuity if through the program you can't find somebody that qualifies.
Right. East Hampton also might have some. Cause they've done a number of, uh, the mills and stuff.
Yep.
And I think some of those are ownership.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would imagine that they've done it. I don't know of any off the top of my head. But from, you know, I deal with a lot of different municipalities and they like to have the flexibility of an affordable housing trust. Not that they will always use it because in certain circumstances, it's better to have the units built. But they like to have the option when it just doesn't make sense based on the development. In a lot of the ownership situations, they find it doesn't make sense because with the rentals, it still qualifies on the subsidized housing inventory. And you don't necessarily have the resale issues. It potentially falling off of the subsidized housing inventory that you do in those ownership contexts.
Would the Valley CDC be one of the options for overseeing?
Yes, so it's, someone that Barry had actually had breakfast with a couple of times, I think.
You know, there, there's a, a woman who's on our finance committee, is on their board. And maybe that would be helpful for us to see what our options are with them. But that's another thing.
Yeah, and I mean, you start to get, they charge between six and eight percent of the purchase price to do what they're looking to do.
Okay.
So, you know, you can, as you know, there is a lot of work that goes into it and the state's overseeing.
Exactly. That's exactly right. And somebody who's mentioned either Mike or John down there. Now we have to get another board. We can barely, barely get people to run for, so what...
I mean, I can tell you that we had a PDPC, a real conversation on whether we wanted to do this or not. Uh, once we really started pulling out what it took. Cause it's, it's ownership.
Yes.
Who's the executive director? You know? Well, you can find out.
Yeah. And I, I emailed her as well. Cause she doesn't, they don't do rentals. Cause I have, I have some rental projects over in Amherst. And I said, because Amherst Housing Authority has a corner on the market there and they charge $9,000 for the affirmative marketing plan and then a couple of thousand dollars for the rental units just to qualify them. And then $750 annually for this recertification. And so, yeah, I mean, and that starts the, if you have a development like Amherst Motel, you're talking about $40,000 before even getting off the ground and building it. So I mean, that's, that's real money for developers.
Yeah.
Um, and so I looked to Valley CDC to see if they had some alternative, just so it wasn't a monopoly and...
Joanne?
Yeah. I, I could look it up, I don't know.
Campbell Collins.
Oh, Joanne Campbell.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they weren't interested in doing, at least they didn't have a formula yet for their rental and what they would be looking to do. So it's, it's somewhat of a cottage industry. There are a lot of outfits out of Boston. You know, anytime you get in touch with DHCD, they'll give you a list of who you can, lottery agents is what they call them, who you can talk to. And the great majority of them are from the eastern part of the state. And so, for example, um, Presidential Apartments, who's a client, they went through the regulatory agreement piece, that's the one that you've seen in the paper, with, uh, the local initiative program and local action units. And the town is actually a signatory to the regulatory agreement. So now you've got the town's involvement. So it's town, DHCD, and developer, all part of it. And quite frankly, there, I talked to Amherst Town Council at length because you've got, you know, three different parties looking to negotiate this agreement. So it, it's a, once you start to dive into the details, I think you can see that that thread just keeps going and you get to a web that you don't necessarily, I mean, especially my personal thing is, you look at the number of, uh, units you have on a subsidized housing inventory and, um, the list that is most recent is December of 2014. I'm waiting for an updated list from the state based upon year-round housing units and subsidized housing inventory. So there may be some fluctuation. They said they should have that out in the next few weeks. But especially as Mr. Zagradin said, if you look at compared to some Hadley and Grandby and Hatfield and some of these other municipalities, Hadley's in a fantastic position to sock away those funds. Build some if it's appropriate in appropriate locations, but sock away those funds and just be ahead of the curve should anything happen.
And that's another issue too. I mean, if all of a sudden we as the town are gonna locate this housing next to somebody's property, wow.
Yep.
Okay.
But as Barry said, we can pick, we as the town can pick a piece of property that is free of, uh, conflict and choose to put units there rather than letting a developer put them there.
That is a valid, strong, valid point, yeah.
Well, you know that developers often use 40B projects as a sword to leverage the town to allow the project that they really want.
A sword or a threat?
They said, you're gonna rob it.
I mean, that's it. And so Hadley had it, it happened. They went in and somebody said, I'm gonna do a 40B here. Or I'll reduce the density and do these condominiums. Or I'll reduce the density and do these townhomes. And the town says, okay, yeah, that, that's great. Because there's just a lot of infrastructure and oversight that go into these affordable developments.
Actually, the town first said no. And then he came forward with a 40B and the town said, wait a minute.
We didn't need them.
It's not along by the Penne River.
Yeah.
Okay.
My question to you, Larry, who's the agency in charge of this? State agency?
Right now it's DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development.
No, would they, they should have a record of who does this and who's building what in this state, don't they?
Yeah, they probably do.
So is that the place they call to find out?
Yeah, Bill Rail is the...
Unless there are four towns.
R-E-Y-D-L-T.
R-E what?
R-Y.
I don't have that on my head.
Cause he's the one I contacted to find out about how you can certify to do all of this.
What's his first name?
William.
And that is Department of what?
Housing and Community Development.
I, I don't know which ones have that, uh, the program, but I, I can find out.
Marshfield, I think was one of them. I mean, they're a fairly affluent community.
Yeah, they're primarily eastern Mass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of this trickles out to the western part of the state just because we're in the Commonwealth.
But what you'll find, as, as you know, for a lot of the towns that we do have, we do have inclusionary bylaws, they get a lot of nine-lot subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, right, right, just saying.
So they don't trigger it.
Right. Well, I mean, Hadley's the same. I think it's the seven lot, anything over a seven lot subdivision triggers having an affordable component to it. So I wouldn't be surprised if you see a couple of frontage lots and then, you know, five lot subdivision in between.
We've been there, right?
Which I recall from memory that I've seen.
The original coming down the road, I think it's got about eight lots. They know they're gonna have to comply.
Yes, that small subdivision, offshadowed, I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, I mean, is it appropriate? How do you value that? Is it appropriate to put one affordable unit up there away from public transit, um...
Yeah, it's a tough...
Et cetera.
Everything is tough.
Affordable lot or affordable building on a lot?
It's an affordable building on a lot. And that building has to look not dissimilar from the non-affordable units.
You know, you're building million-dollar houses. How are you gonna do that?
Well, you've...
Potemkin Village.
Inside, you don't get the granite countertops.
You have a facade, but...
Right.
Yeah.
One room inside, that's...
I mean, that's, that's, that's in there.
Well, and that's why I think the payment in lieu, I mean, that makes sense just like this development. And then it does give the town the control of the...
I mean, it cuts both ways. You know, there's something to be said about being inclusionary and included, so you're diluting it rather than concentrating it all in one area. Um, so it, it cuts.
To me, I...
There are good arguments both ways.
Ideal if our housing authority would take this on, but they specifically said they don't want no part of this.
I don't blame them.
I don't think they necessarily knew how much money was to be made.
What? They would make money, they would make nothing.
Well, Tom just told us what the Amherst Housing Authority charges.
In this town, look at, they're ready to cut everybody's pay now. What are you talking about? Where are you?
The Amherst Authority has a pretty robust staff.
Right, yes. They, they are pretty well-funded and, I mean, it, it takes work. I mean, that Presidential Apartments took three years to get it, to get that regulatory agreement finally accepted by the state and the affirmative marketing plan accepted. So I mean...
They were...
And that's where the developer had just left those units. He had them unoccupied for those, for that amount of time and wasn't getting any rent from them. I mean, so that's why, that's the real reaction, I think, to Mr. Szaszczynski's point. The develop, the developer said, well, what if we hold these and they can't qualify for a mortgage? Or they can't qualify, their credit stinks, they can't pay the rent. You know, these are the things that, it does fall on the developer's shoulders to have to keep these units offline. It's an added cost, so...
So if we... What are our, our options according to our zoning bylaws to get this situation off the hook?
Well, you're first on us. You have a lot of options.
We don't adopt the inclusionary trust fund within four or five months.
I mean, as it is now, as I, as I understand the bylaw, you do not have the lieu payment option under that.
So we would have to amend the bylaw.
Under the senior housing section. So what I had given you was essentially the wording out of your inclusionary zoning that offer these in lieu payments and plug that into the senior housing.
Cause they go to the ZBA.
And get a variance?
Yeah.
So yeah, I mean, I guess our options would be either a use variance or, because I think that...
Well, use variance you can't get.
In, in Hadley, they allow it.
They permit use variance in Hadley?
Hadley.
Yes.
Gee whiz.
I love about Hadley.
So there is one town in the state.
There's actually, uh, Westboro, I think is another town. But that's a point.
That's funny.
And without a row as well. But this is, um, we could also look to, because the condition in this permit specifically says that we have to qualify in the subsidized housing inventory. And if you look at the senior housing overlay bylaw, that's not a requirement.
Right.
So we were thinking, can we modify this special permit through opening a public hearing, coming back in front of the board and requesting a modification to essentially switch, swap out one non-re requirement, the qualification on subsidized housing inventory, for another non-re requirement, payment in lieu? So we would say, we would offer, um, we would be willing to pay whatever that number is to, we can put it into escrow, we can contribute it to CPA, we can put it in some fund, we can gift it to the town to be held until spring town meeting. And then that can initially be that nest egg that funds the, um, affordable housing trust. And so, I mean, we saw that as a viable option and an immediate option. You know, we can submit the application and be on the November hearing, um, for you to swap out those two provisions. Take out the qualification on the subsidized housing inventory, put in, you know, developer will pay 70, 80, whatever that number is, thousand dollars per unit in lieu of actually providing the unit.
So you think there's something in that section of the bylaw that gives the board the legal authority to swap that out even though that's not in the bylaw?
I would say that adding the qualification on the subsidized housing inventory, because that was not in the bylaw and they've exceeded that. I could say, I would say, and I will say, that they could find that as a condition of this permit, they can deem that provision satisfied because we are providing a payment in lieu.
Now, how soon do you need to some kind of a, uh, decision?
Good question, Jim.
Uh, for Mr. Roberts not to be behind the eight ball?
Probably yesterday, to be honest, but, um, it's, it's the sighting of the, when he's laying on the lot.
So you're, you're saying that like the May town meeting is too far away for, for this decision? Okay. That, that's what I'm kinda looking for. We, we, we need to do something between now and May. The sooner the better, obviously, so that you're not behind the eight ball, have to
so that you're not behind the eight ball, have to go start pumping concrete and force you into a whole lot of extra expense for no good reason.
I think we need to get our act together and either have this guy here do some homework and some research that how can we make, he understands what's going on here, how can we make this work?
I gave you that.
And not, not getting the town last month in, in such a mess we can't get out of it, and then there's more turmoil on top of it.
I gave you last month. Did you, did you take a look at it?
Yeah.
Yes, I sent you a copy of it. That was the quick fix. It would have been a zone change and allowed the in lieu payment as you do with that.
Once you, once you set this trust up, can it ever be dissolved?
Uh, we'll find out when we go to that workshop.
Probably the town can vote to it.
I don't, I don't... Maybe after, what do you do with the funds?
We're waiting for the money.
Yeah, exactly.
A quick fix, what about the long, long...
Long-term fix.
Is there a fall town meeting in the long term?
Yes, yes, it's Thursday.
Oh, God, okay, well, yeah, I think that's the problem.
We're hoping to have this on the fall town meeting, that's why I was just here tonight, trying to understand what...
We were, we were trying to, when we, when we talked to Larry a month ago, we had some questions about the, the wording of the problem, and normally the fall town meeting is the end of October, and because it was moved to the early part of October this year, we, you know, we weren't gonna be, we weren't gonna have anything ready, bottom line. We were hoping to get something in, but because of the timing. Because of, because of the timing and the moving of the date, yeah, it is what it is. I'm not complaining, we're just making a statement that we weren't gonna make it, and so I think, well, try to make a decision tonight on this isn't gonna, is, is, is not gonna happen because we don't have any information, at least after the eighteenth. What we can do is, we don't have, we will, I don't think we have the authority to do what Mr. Attorney Reedy is suggesting. However, possibly a joint meeting, joint public hearing, if it's needed, of the ZBA and the planning board to address exactly what you're talking about is a possibility. So that they have the authority to move things around, we have the authority to do some other things.
And then you would modify this permit.
So between the two of us...
So why would it be a use variance?
So I guess variance is either falling to dimensional or use, and I don't...
Well, it's either a use or it's a variance from the requirement of that section.
Right. Would it make any sense?
No, I'm not sure it's a use.
Would it, would it make any sense if Bill Meyer contacted town council on this issue to find out the legality of what really needs to be done in this? I'm sure Copman and Page has, you know, worked on these kind of projects throughout the state.
Well, we get the same type of opinion that told us that we had to put the Flat Towns building over there?
Oh, boy, where we going with that?
So I'm gonna suggest that, uh, that Jim's hybrid of a joint meeting makes a certain amount of sense, makes a lot of sense. We adopted Senior Housing Overlay District in two thousand eight, so we're coming up on, uh, uh, May of two thousand eight, so we're coming up on ten years, and this is the sole project we have had.
Yep.
And at that rate, um, you know, this may be the only project.
Is this, Johnny talked about the long term, is this the long term yet?
Uh, this may be the only project we have.
I'll remind, I'll remind my comments.
How do you know that?
John Maynard Kane's comment about the long term.
The long term, we're all dead.
Well, never mind the comments, let's, let's get to the real facts.
So the point is, I think that we're in a situation, we've been working on this for ten years, more intensely for about, uh, almost four years. I'm, this is a classic, we're not setting any precedence by what we do here. This is feeling our way on the first one out of the, out of the gate. Uh, and I just don't think, uh, you know, even, even what Tom had originally proposed of our modifying this uh, because of the circumstances surrounding this particular project, we don't seem to have authority in here to waive provisions of the bylaw like we do in site plan approval. Uh, but on the other hand, uh, especially when there's so much effort has gone into trying to figure out a way to get out, around a problem that we had a hand in creating, basically, it's like approving, um, cell towers where the bylaw doesn't allow them. You know, if we go ahead and vote a solution that works for this project, uh, no one's gonna appeal it.
I still, it's the next project. I still would like to see this gone through the town council for the legality of what we should do. You could explain to them the situation we're in, what do we need to fix it?
We will have an opportunity to speak with, uh, town council on Thursday night, but we're waiting for a forum.
All in five minutes.
Well, but we've, we've gotten lots of, lots of discussion with Copman, well, well, with Joe Bard prior to town meetings on multiple occasions, because, well, we're paying for them anyways, we ask him some questions, and usually, usually, he'll give us some, some guidance. Other times when he can, he'll look close and say, huh.
How would he even, how, how would he even be prepared to answer this, not knowing anything, come into a town meeting and not knowing anything about it? Right there?
Bill may fill in, that's, that's a good point.
Here, we got a bunch of lawyers in the room. Lawyer, that's good.
That's the whole point, though. There's, there's really no precedence here. I know we don't set precedents, but Bill's saying we could set a precedent, I think.
Well, that's not much set a precedent, but, uh, uh, gnaw our way out of this little cage that we're caught in.
This is like a guessing game.
I'm not voting for them.
We're none of this guessing crap.
Looking for any votes out of this.
Well, how about just foregoing putting the money in the trust fund? Is it, okay, forget the, uh, the five affordable units, go ahead and build all market rate units, and then the risk we run is two tenths of one percent from our thirteen percent of affordable percentage.
Yeah. I think that's the best interest of the town.
That, that very well may be the best and the simplest thing.
And it may very well be not.
But I don't think you have the ability to do that.
John, I, I, you said it was a good idea or a bad idea?
I said it could be very well not.
It could go either way.
Right, yes.
Uh, although for these six units, which, again, may be the only six units we're ever, five, for these five units, which may be the only five units that we're ever gonna see, uh...
And maybe not.
I would...
You know, it may be six units if you're, if you're upgrading by five numbers, the market rate.
Well, go ahead.
You've got, so...
So what's gonna make the point? Yeah, there's just, uh, you know, there's just no precedence to be set here. This is a very unusual situation that has been years in process. And, uh, we, we, yeah, if we end up successfully modifying, so what Tom is proposing is that we basically say, okay, we'll accept payment in lieu by some contortions, but we'll accept payment in lieu in, um, and then we have a, it gets approved, it's blessed retroactively. If it doesn't get approved at town meeting, uh, we may still, we may have to revisit it.
Well, and that's where maybe those joint ZBA planning board hearing to go through the variance process and the modification.
I think having them make you a payment with this big question mark.
Because this is complicated for a town meeting.
The ZBA would have the authority to suspend the five units.
Yes.
And I don't mean cancel, I'm talking suspend.
I guess, I think what we would be looking for is just, well, either a cancellation or just a payment in lieu to be, so we would, you would have that money, the town would have that money. And then, as Bill's suggesting, if in May, if Affordable Housing Trust passes, that money would go immediately into that trust.
Right.
And it's probably clean.
The money would go to the, some other, some other institution.
Yeah, right, we could come up with whether it's CPA getting the funds, whether it's the Hadley Housing Authority getting the funds.
You could put it to the TDR fund. Yeah, so something that makes sense for this particular application, because like Bill says, the quagmire we're in, we're not trying to, we're not trying to do anything sneaky here.
Right.
We have put ourselves into a unintentionally by trying to do the right thing, we've put ourselves into a place where we don't, we, we don't wanna overly punish you, and we certainly don't wanna do the wrong thing for the town.
Right.
And in the long term, we think we have, we think we have some ideas for the right thing, but we need a whole lot more information.
Town council has to approve the thing anyways, the word goes to there.
The, the, any article would have to go to town council.
Why don't you talk to him to get some information about, maybe they have done this for another community?
If, if you are planning on doing the ZBA...
What the hell is that even talking?
My suggestion would be just to keep it clean and not get mucked up with this floating money uh, that was given for one thing and now we've gotta use it for something else, which I think is gonna be really problematic. Um, I would not go that route, I would go with the route of just get a variance from the requirement from that section for the units.
Okay.
Substitute in lieu for in kind.
Yeah, or something like that. It's just, just having this nebulous bond or a lieu payment floating around, which will work out great if you do have the trust ultimately, but if you don't have the trust, um, I'm not sure you can use it for a TDR. Cause it was given...
With a va, I mean, with a variance.
Sure about anything.
We could, if we had done this, if we knew we were gonna get into this situation probably before, we could have gone and said, "We want a variance from the affordability requirement," so that we don't, either, we don't want to have to provide them, or we would like to instead provide, I mean, quite frankly, whatever.
Right.
Because at that point, you're getting exception from the zoning bylaws. So that's why we had just suggested, just so Barry won't like this, but still, no, he's not getting away without doing anything. I mean, of course, we would prefer that, sure. Um, but understanding the process that we're going through, if, you know, it, we've been all talking about this payment in lieu, so I think it's pretty genuine for us to say, "We'd like to do something with that money to put it somewhere," and we think that combining the ZBA to say, "You don't need to comply with the affordable requirements," and having this board say, "Yes, we'll modify your existing special permit so that it reflects this ZBA decision, and the money will go to, you know, be held in escrow until after town meeting if it passes. It'll fund it, and if not, another..."
Yeah, we definitely wanna get the money out, because Barry, on a business basis, knowing that there was an inclusionary component, proceeded with this project, so he's prepared to carry out his obligations, except that it is...
Would he, would he, would he be willing to take out another project in town in lieu of building this, i.e. the North Hadley Hall?
Uh, no.
This is where I think...
Let's not, let's get out of here.
This is where I think you have to retain the rational nexus between the funds and what it's coming for.
That is, that may be a good selling point for town meeting, but I don't think it's a quid pro quo we can, uh, we can make.
And we'll contribute the funds, and then he'll agree to do it for those funds on the back end.
Oh, man.
Possibly.
Aren't you doing something similar over in, uh, Hatfield?
Hatfield is a school.
Yeah.
So, so variance to suspend...
Twenty-seven point five, point eight.
Five point eight.
Okay.
And then amend the special permit to accept payment in lieu based on the action of the ZBA.
Exactly.
That's a good summary.
Yeah.
I don't agree with that at all, until I know all the facts.
Molly, are you waiting, are you gonna wade in on this, or are you waiting for some other thing?
No, I mean, I wasn't planning on weighing in, I mean, I just wanted to understand what the, the issues were around it. And, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of trying to expeditiously move the project forward. To be honest, we get the people in town who are interested in the property, and I questioned, you know, with some degree of frequency about what's going on with the over fifty-five, we thought, you know, what's this we're hearing about, you know, the pricing, you know, so I just wanted a better handle on, on what was happening, and I'm glad to hear how you're trying to resolve it.
What, what, one of the great comments I hear, "Well, geez, I'd like to get something, you know, downsized," and Barry had a focus group. And I don't know if you heard about it, but, you know, "What do you wanna pay?" "Well, two twenty-five, two fifty, maybe." Well, this is what you're gonna get.
Okay, just for, just for point of information. Is November seventh election year this year?
No.
No.
Not in Massachusetts.
Okay. This is a five Tuesday month. We can't hold a public hearing on the seventeenth because it's too soon. However, if you want to do this so-called joint public hearing with the ZBA and us, we could hold a public hearing on November seventh if you filed on November, on, on, uh, October seventeenth because it gives, because it gives the five Tuesday month, we have the time.
Yeah, I thought you didn't tell me that.
We have, we have the time to publish the notices based on that.
Do we even need to reopen the public hearing?
Well...
I think we should.
You give you the permit, right? You give you the decision, it's filed with the clerk, it's recorded at the registry.
Yeah.
It's done. So what you're now doing is coming in to have your permit modified.
Yeah, it would only be, if this rises to the level of being a material change, I think we could probably argue about that, but the conservative approach is probably just to...
Just publish it.
Renote it.
We have to, because Barry was closed.
Yes, but, I mean, we may argue that it's a de minimis change.
We amended some stuff, even though it's been done, there have been minor amendments. We're in a gray area here. I think the safest way is just to do the... I think this needs a public hearing. Just do the public hearing. The biggest thing is, can the ZBA meet on the seventh?
We will track them down.
Okay. Cause you, that gives you a month.
Yep.
And if you can do that, we could certainly do yours on the seventh. Like I said, we have enough time this month because of the, the five Tuesday month to do the public, no, public notices and go forward with that. In fact, if you can find the ZBA out ahead of time, get me the mailing labels and I'll just schedule it accordingly.
Okay.
Okay?
So what I will do, John, is, uh, I'll send...
Then you could be here.
I'll send, uh, Joe Bard email asking if Copman and Page has experience with, uh, inclusionary zoning and affordable housing, and that we wanna talk to him when he's out here on Thursday.
So phone it up.
Yeah, exactly right.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that outside is easy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll solve with it, nothing.
Oh, really easy. Well, it sounds like a plan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yeah, we're trying to...
Want to do that? We'll give this back.
Oh, got it.
We've got, we've got the information, so we'll probably see the actions.
You know, I question the location of that. Isn't the hall room where they're making it to the John Muzany Health Center? Isn't that all ripped apart?
I don't, one of them, it says, "But not far," I, I...
No, no.
No, 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 that's...
Six forty-five and seven forty-five.
Right, it's the...
It's the Banks Community Center, right in Boltwood.
I don't believe that.
The Boltwood farm, if you want to have...
They've taken a whole lower level of Banks, and that's where the hall room is, and make it into the John Muzany Health Center.
Right.
Oh.
I, I don't know.
Somebody better check on something.
Well, if we go to the tour, I'm sure they'll have, have where the, uh, uh, the rest of stuff is gonna be held after that.
Well, if anybody's following this.
Those set up by these guys, right? Was it set up by you? Uh, not, not me personally, yes. Was it set up by PVPC? So, Banks Center, Hall Room, seventy Boltwood block. It's being renovated, they're saying. I don't know. I don't, I, uh...
He's doing it, he's doing it.
He's got it.
Uh, I gotta think, you know, if you didn't just pull that out of the, out of the gas. There may be a sign on the door that says, you know, "Go to..."
Door around the corner.
Exactly.
Maybe they have a conference room that's ready to use.
Yeah, perhaps.
Anyways, okay.
Very, very...
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks for your input.
Of course.
What else did we get, Mr. Larry?
Wow.
That was a big one.
That was. Uh, solar bio. This is your solar bio.
This is our existing solar bio?
Yes. And what's highlighted in yellow are some things I'm suggesting you might wanna use to punch it up. So I haven't gone and changed anything, you know, relative to the processes or where they're permitted of the like. Uh, but I've just added some things. I know that, you know, screening, uh, is always an issue that comes up, so this section sort of expands on that a little bit. There's a little bit I'm suggesting you take a look at relative to your financial surety for your abandonment and disqualification. And just some other things, just to, you know, have the management plans, additional, uh, like the stormwater management plan, erosion control plan. Nothing really crazy, but just something to take a look at, cause, uh, and I've sat through a few of these administrative reviews and hearings and stuff, and I've heard some complaints that were made, and, uh, you know, you could...
So, so is the yellow all new wording?
Yellow is all new.
Okay.
The yellow is all, what's highlighted is all new.
All new wording, okay.
And what's in black is just cut and pasted from...
What we have, okay. I will make sure I understand that, okay.
Does this suggest, and I haven't read this all, that any site could be appropriate if it were reasonably screened?
I'm not making any change in terms of where you are permitting these to occur, or the process that they have to go through.
May every, does every, will every site, according to this, be assumed to be properly screened?
Can it be assumed as is or without, without modifications? No.
With, with modification. Is it possible that there are certain sites that could never be properly screened, is my question?
If they wanted to sink enough money into it and do enough, I mean, all I can tell you is, with the heavy equipment and putting enough money into it, you can do amazing stuff. So I can't say never, but there are probably some sites that are cost effective to do it.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, we may regulate, but we cannot prohibit.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Well, you can.
Can you regulate it?
Well, you can prohibit, you can prohibit if you want to. You can regulate, you can reasonably regulate them if you want to. And that includes prohibiting them in certain zones and requiring special permits in certain...
Everybody keeps saying reasonable. What is reasonable?
It's, it's different, I tell you, it's reasonable is different.
Very subjective.
Different for, well, but, but, but in terms of solar bio... Different for, well, but, but in terms of solar bylaws, and this is different from reasonable regulation agricultural uses, which is almost, you can't touch them, solar bylaws, which have similar wording, there are towns, they have bylaws that have been approved, that permit them only in certain districts and by special permit.
So we allow large scale in the agricultural residential district or in the industrial district? So one solution to your problem is to limit it to the industrial district.
Right. At which point, you know, we have the size of the parcels, which you're probably gonna find in your agricultural outline.
But, but, there are two things with that, if we limit it to the industrial, we get into the situation that Joe was complaining about, where someone was proposing a solar field in the industrial park, we're taking an industrial zoned land.
Yeah, your, your.
Your plenty land.
That's right. The other part is that if we take it out of the agricultural zone, we are affecting every property owner in the, in the agricultural residential district who could benefit from leasing to a solar field.
You, you know, you have to look at it parcel by parcel and just recognize, if you have a good reason, you know, 'cause you're doing it by special permit, if you have a good reason, you don't have to grant a special permit.
But the good reason has to be more than.
I don't like it.
I don't like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it can, it could be, you can adequately screen it there, that's a good reason.
That's, that's, you know, that's what I was getting at. So simply not liking solar, simply not liking solar is, is, is too subjective to you, you gotta have real reason.
Because what, what you're saying by a lot of this, by special permit, is you're saying that on some parcels they're okay, and on some parcels they're not okay, so we wanna have that discretion to determine which are okay and which aren't.
You know, far as solar, like, the roof mounts, the barn mounts, that don't bother me at all, it's the thing, like, what they did over Atkins, I don't wanna see them do that, you know.
That's a little.
All around our town.
That is a little raw.
They think, they think that is.
It's raw, but it's, it's not just there, it's all over.
I, I, John, they wanted you to see that there, they want, there is civic pride in that field.
Exactly right.
Civic pride in that field, it's, it's a state.
What kind of pride?
They, they, they're green, they're green, and they're, they're trying to be green. I like solar.
Yeah.
Doesn't bother me a bit, however, being that close to the road, I'd go to agree with John, it's like, and again, everybody's opinion is different.
Right.
And that's one that's kinda like in your face, the solar fields that we have around town that are set way off from the road, I mean, you're talking hundreds and hundreds of feet, okay, you see them, but it doesn't really, so what?
Right.
But that one is a little bit, and again, it's a little bit too much in your face.
I travel around the state and I see those, it's waves of.
Oh, yeah. But I, I, I always think, I, there, there are really only two issues with solar farms, and one is stormwater management, that can be pretty easily addressed, and the other is aesthetics, and it's the other side out of mind, eventually the economics.
Some of the solar fields, like, we're limiting them to reasonable size, but somebody's solar field, like you see, that are twenty and thirty acres, that's, that's, that's a little much.
I think of the seventy-five acre one in Spencer.
Well, what's to stop it, the way, if, I mean, once.
It's huge.
Ten ounces, five acres in Hadley.
Yeah.
But.
Five acres?
Yes.
Your compromise is a good one.
Can you do a large scale in five acres?
Yes, well, you can do a large scale in one acre.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, well, I'm large scale from the state for a second, it's two and fifty kilowatts.
Oh, yeah, a, a, uh, one acre, I believe, is just about one megawatt.
Okay.
I think it's right, 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 right under or just over one megawatt roughly.
Because for the, we did a two point three megawatt, I didn't play field, I didn't get out like twelve acres.
Well, again, is it solid or is it dispersed, dispersed like, you know, is it like pieces all over, make, take a, maybe a twelve acre parcel, but I doubt, I doubt it's twelve acres of panels.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, panel circus, and it was, I'm sure it was more than an acre, but, but it would be just.
Yeah, I, I believe it's about an acre, it's, I think it's, I think one acre, not a megawatt, an acre is about three quarters of a megawatt.
Okay, that would make sense.
About, about that, but, but that's still a lot, that's still a hundred fifty KW.
Well, though, someone like nowadays, a two fifty KW is not even large scale anymore, because, you know, they're all building megawatts, you know, two, three megawatts.
But the state defines anything as over ten KW as a commercial system.
Yeah, and for the green communities, anything over two fifty is large scale, yeah.
So anyway.
Yeah, okay, so what we're trying to do is, you know, give you some sense that you can, you know, you're just not victims to this and are powerless, because you can do something, but just be judicious.
And I, I think we need to look at what Larry suggested in yellow and take it to heart and say, you know, that we wanna put in there, because it does make it a bit more concrete as far as what it means to screen.
Yeah. And one of the things I found, I put it in there for the decommissioning bond, is, and you may have in yours, 'cause I didn't really see it quite explicit, that the dollar value is based upon prevailing wages, you don't deduct the recycling value from it, and you do an inflation factor for twenty-five years from now, because if the town is gonna have to take that bond and decommission the site, it's gonna cost you a lot more to do it than the private applicant to do it. And I've always said, the town really doesn't wanna have to decommission that site, so that bond should be like a poison pill, that if you're gonna make us use that bond.
Too big to walk away.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right, because you don't wanna get involved in that, throwing it there and taking it down and recycling it, and, I mean, it's just, it's not something we're good.
In your, your visual impact mitigation, you don't have to maintain that screen for the entire life of the solar rate, right? You didn't put that in there.
I would have to look, but we can always, we can always add that.
That should be in there.
I mean, everything should be maintained for the life of the.
But if it's not spelled in.
Yeah, I know, it's true, with the fencing, any kind of screening. So take a look at that.
Will be the term of the, of the solar rate.
That's a good one, right. Yeah, there are probably a few things in there you wanna have that applied, but. In fact, we can probably come up with just a generic statement like that that applies to all of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if it comes in a couple, few areas of the general, yeah. Yeah, you put that in, almost in a definite, general requirement.
Yes, it applies to everything.
Well, twenty-eight point four point three is a good place to put that. The system conditions, owners of solar rate, solar systems, shall be responsible for maintaining them in good condition.
Yeah.
And you can just put another sub sentence or a comma.
Yeah.
Including, you know, roads, screening, fencing, whatever it should be, right there.
Including all aspects.
Yes.
For the life of the facility.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be a perfect spot for it.
Yeah, that would be.
Twenty-eight point.
Twenty-eight point four point three.
Yeah. Right there.
Yeah. Okay.
Twenty-eight point six point eight, no more than fifty percent of the land used to require clearing of forest.
Yes.
What is forest? Is it? There's actually a state land use classification for that, really. Yeah. And, and it's, you know, some people say, well, why don't you apply the same standard to farmland, and my thought is always, well, because it's, it's easily restorable, to restore it, the facility like this, to farmland, but you can't restore the forest when the life of the project is over.
How do you restore the forest?
So, and even the state is trying to discourage you from using forest land, I think they don't give you as high a.
Pardon? You need to clear cut them yourself?
Yeah.
They did that, where the hell is that, in orange somewhere, didn't they?
Yeah, I mean, they don't prohibit it, but they just don't let you.
Clear cut the whole thing.
Well, they let you charge as much for what you're generating, you get like a little minus to it, minus factor into it.
Yeah, that'll look like about a thirty acre project over there.
That was a big one, if I remember. I haven't, I haven't seen it, but I remember reading about it, that there's a big one up there.
To go to Route Two, jump on Route Two to Boston.
Yeah.
Right there in orange.
Yeah.
That thing, you take, clear cut that one.
That's, that's true, yeah, it's right at the, the junction there.
Right.
What, two and two way?
Uh, yeah.
Right.
The, I haven't been there.
Then across the street they went.
I think it's like, what is it, the southeast corner.
Boy, I haven't been to the other end, why, it's all been clear cutted.
All the wood, all the wood on the state.
It's a really big area, they.
Right, they clear cut the whole thing.
Yeah.
I was watching that.
Wow.
I said, boy, I hope you guys don't come to have me.
That's when we could stop easily.
Nasty.
Yeah, and that's.
Anyways, okay, so, next, thank you very much.
So we'll see you in a month.
See you, we'll see, you're gonna be at the E2?
I'll be, no, I'll see you in a couple of weeks, but, but, I'm going to that.
Are you gonna let us know where the heck this place is?
I'm assuming that's where it is.
Well, you guys are setting this up, can you find out and let us know, email?
I will let you know if it's not there.
Okay.
I don't even know where it is.
It's Bullwood, if you look at the. Right behind the post, old post office, isn't it?
Yeah, Bullwood Walk, that's, that's the center of Amherst. And the farm.
Google that, John.
One of the farm is, I'm, it's like at Hampshire College, if I'm right.
I don't know where that is.
Where's, where's the location saying?
Twelve Long Meadow Drive.
So that's, that's just before Hampshire College. Okay.
Twelve Long Meadow Drive.
Yeah. That's right, that's right, right near Hampshire College, one sixteen.
Yeah.
Bank Center, is it, right?
The bank center is, it's like right in the middle of the apartment lot.
Yeah, lousy parking.
Yeah.
Lousy parking, okay.
They know how to pick a senior center site.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, see you in a month, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Get in the month. I have nothing else.
Very good.
I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Do you have anything, anybody else have anything?
Did anybody do anything on that budget, nothing?
We haven't heard from them, they resolved it a different way and did not touch our budget at all. Looks like much to click.
Right, instead, how do you've got nothing?
Anyway.
Okay, you can make copies of this one and.
Anything? Move where you're turning. Motion, second?
Take them out.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Medious history, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.